Good afternoon. By my watch and our clock, it is twelve noon. Welcome everyone to our second public hearing on the conference center. I'm Councilman Larry Henry. I'm in a different seat today, but again, like to welcome everyone. Couple of housekeeping issues first. First off, is there anyone who hasn't signed up on the list that wants to sign up now? Okay. With that said, each speaker again will get five minutes as explained in the last meeting. The topics that will be discussed as far as the conference center goes will be the desirability of proposal over the other, one proposal over the other. Facilities, the public would like to have in the conference center. The amount of subsidy, if any, which should be provided for the conference center beyond the nine million offered in the RFP. And finally, the desirability of providing city financed parking at either location. Those will be the topics that should be discussed in each speaker's talking points today. With that, I'll hand it over to Drew. He wants to make a comment for us.
Yeah, I just want to tell everybody here and whoever happened watching it that the mayor couldn't be here today and he wanted to express that he had a prior work commitment that he tried to do something with, but he wasn't, he was unable to. But no doubt other councilmen have the same problem. But that's why we have asked JCTV to videotape it and to stream it online. All the council people will be provided with the video of your comments as well as the public. So we wanted to do today during the day to accommodate, we can't come at an I have other meetings, but that comes at something of a sacrifice because some council people couldn't get off work. So with that, I'll just turn it back over.
Thank you Drew. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. One thing before, we have our first speaker. Our next public hearing will be this upcoming Monday on the twenty-third, 5:30 PM before our council work session. So again, Monday, September twenty-third, 5:30 PM before the council work session. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with our first speaker. And correct me if I'm, if I don't say this correctly, but Joe Bednar?
I know Joe, and he is not here. Yet.
Larry Cobb? Hey, Mr. Cobb, if you could state your address also, please.
Okay. Yes, I'm Larry Cobb, reside at 741 Turnberry Drive in Jefferson City. First of all, I'd like to address that I'm here because I feel very strongly that we need the convention center in Jefferson City. I know both of the parties who have made proposals and both companies that I respect are, and they're both companies that I respect and have worked with over, throughout my career, and hopefully to continue to do so in the future. My comments today are about how I feel personally, what is best, what is the best proposal for Jefferson City. My, my comments will be brief, but they're very strong comments that I believe in. Number one, desirability of one proposal over the other. I have said for many years that I thought the mall would be a great location for a convention center. I've talked to it with my colleagues and many of my friends, and many of y'all have heard me talk about it. My comment, my company's associates and I have talked with General Growth over several years about trying to get them to do something, and they just weren't in the position to do so or didn't want to do anything. Do we all remember three years ago when General Growth went into bankruptcy and everybody was scared to death that we were going to close the mall? They were going to close the mall. We have struggled fifteen to twenty years to have a viable mall in Jefferson City. We did not have a partner with General Growth, but I believe we could have one today. The mall could be a win-win situation. I believe the mall would be full in five years if the convention center was there. I'm not here to speak about just filling the mall, but what would be best for Jefferson City in the long term. A convention center at the mall would complete two cycles the city has been working with and struggling with for many years. How can we get a convention center built? And how can we have a successful retail mall in Jefferson City? Through my expertise and my career, I can envision a very viable mall for many years to come at the convention center if the convention center is at the mall. Dealing with retailers today is very different than when we developed Wildwood Crossings. Today, and I believe in many years to come and to the future, we won't see the major retailers looking at cities the size of Jefferson City. They need to have some added bonuses to come to cities like ours. A convention center with thousands of additional customers from conventions would provide a great added bonus. I do not believe associations would not come to Jefferson City if the convention center is not downtown. I attend my association meetings, the Missouri Association of Realtors, throughout the state and in Jefferson City for many years. We meet every January in, in Jefferson City at the Capital Plaza Hotel to meet with our legislators. Some of our associates walk up the hill, but most of them have to be shuttled up, two blocks away, especially if it's cold and snowy. When we meet in Joplin, the convention center is not downtown. When we meet in St. Charles, the convention center is not downtown. When we meet in Columbia, it is not always downtown. And when we meet in Springfield, and we have an event downtown, six blocks away, we have shuttles to take us there. I believe sales tax revenue for Jefferson City will increase significantly with the mall location. Consumers will walk across the street or walk across the parking lot to the mall and theater and spend money. Number two, facilities the public would like to have in the conference center. I believe the conference, the facilities need to be addressed by the experts. If twenty-five thousand square foot is acceptable, okay. If we need forty thousand, okay. I'm not, it's not my expertise to determine facility design. Number three, amount of subsidy, if any, should be provided for the conference center beyond the nine million dollars offered in the RFP. I don't believe so. The RFP called for certain size. If the applicants aren't going to provide the square footage and the number of rooms that are in the RFP, then I think we look, need to look at a different equation. For example, if a smaller center is built, then only seven million dollars maybe go towards the building and the other two million goes towards subsidy for sharp falls in the future. Let's make the nine million dollars work the best way we can. Number four, the desirability of providing city financed parking at either location. I don't think additional funding should be, I have about ten seconds left. To finalize what is best for the long-term overall growth of Jefferson City, the mall offers a great location. We get a convention center. We retain and grow retail for not only the convention center and attendees, but we have a more, but we have more retail for all of Jefferson City to shop locally. All in all, for the best interest of Jefferson City, I would like to see the mall given the most consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Our next speaker, Mr.?
Councilman Henry, Mr. Bednar just walked in. It would be a courtesy to let him go. We called your name first, Joe, but I think councilman will let you go.
Mr. Joe Bednar?
All right, Councilman. Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry about being late. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this important subject and topic for the city. And generally, I'm here to make comments on the general process. And in, I think it's important that the process is a process that the city can, the citizens can trust and give you some ideas of what other communities are doing. Obviously, when you're dealing with developers, I'm a little bit out of breath, sorry. You want to be able to have the same, I just recently gave a presentation at MML on Monday about how communities achieve their vision while not jeopardizing their community. And it's about making sure that you're well armed with the professionals that you need to help you make the right decisions and that the interests of the developers are aligned with the city. I think that's the important thing. People sometimes forget in this tension between developers and cities that somehow you can't work together or things, the communications sometimes get mixed so that the interests of both the city and the developer get out of alignment, just like driving a car. And so these professionals can help to make sure that the interest that you have in protecting the citizens, protecting your tax base, enhancing your tax base if possible, and allocating the right incentives at the right time and the right spot. I think that it's important to make sure you've got those processes in place. Some communities, obviously, we've got to decide where do you put a convention center, conference center? And you've got lots of great things going on across the city in different neighborhoods, different wards of your own. And there's a tremendous demand for funds and money. What Jefferson City has, which is unique from other communities, is we are the seat of the state capitol. We have a university, a state university within our city limits. We have a great working relationship, I believe, and I think citizens believe, with the county. And so it's, it's a question of, you know, is there a process to establish to garner all those resources and, and coordinate those resources so there's an alignment of interest amongst the state, the city, the county, and Lincoln University that makes sense that everybody can share in not only the conference center, but other items of interest to this city? Because clearly, all of those other entities put a tremendous demand on your jobs. Currently, obviously, it's, it's a situation where a city staff, you've got great city staff here, it's just difficult to zero in on all the very sophisticated and important issues you'll deal with, for instance, in establishing a master development agreement. And how, how those are triggered, how you keep commitments, how, you know, if, if things go wrong, and nobody expects when you sign a master development agreement that something would go wrong. Everybody has all the right things in mind, but yeah, as my property professor in law school told me, what happens if you die, if the guy across the table from you die? How do you memorialize all those, all that goodwill that you had and all the important things that you wanted to accomplish? So I would just think that, again, I think we need a conference center. Obviously, it's been an issue for, since I moved here in nineteen ninety-two. So I don't know that the sense of urgency that it has to be decided right away, but clearly, you're without, you're without a city administrator now. Your city attorney has a ton on his desk. I know you've got a bid out for a financial advisor, and those are very important to have because it's a matter of being able to sit down and look at all the different levers that you've got, all the different revenue sources that you have. What incentives are available to the city through the state, through the state legislature? To make all of that work so that when the developer comes to with their needs, because clearly hotels don't get built, conference centers don't get built, big projects don't get built without the right incentives. But you don't want to do an incentive that's going to jeopardize your overall finances. There's no point in digging a hole deeper than what you're in. I'm not saying you're in a hole, but the point is you want to both enhance your community and enhance your financial viability and the sustainability of your revenue sources. And so, oh, the city of Riverside, small community, and quite frankly, one that had a much tougher perception in the Kansas City region, they, they hired an outside professional to do a master plan process. And the master plan process is different than your typical planning and zoning. They conducted town hall meetings across the city to ask citizens to come in, roundtables, what do you think we should be doing? What's your, what's, what's important for your neighborhood? What's important for the overall city? They had probably sixty to seventy percent participation. It's a town of three thousand, so it's much smaller. But it, it was held over, I think, a sixteenth period. Received a state award for urban planning. And it has given the council something to always rest, you know, hang their hat on when you're making decisions about economic development, whether it's for office space development, retail, or warehouse. And, and what that city did was from being eight feet underwater in nineteen ninety-three, and it was a long process, in the last eighteen months, they've added a million square feet of office space and a thousand new jobs. And they did it by not having the richest incentives on the market and in the middle of Kansas City and the border war going on between Kansas and Missouri. And they attracted companies outside the state of Missouri to relocate there, which then creates a whole funding stream. Because when you build that kind of space and those kind of companies come in, the revenue stream is adding significant amount, hundreds of thousands of dollars to their revenue every year. And it has the buying of the community that will do industrial there, will do office in this area of town, will redevelop our downtown. They, you know, they've got a great school district in Park Hill, but those are things where, you know, I just suggest you, you consider that before you make any final decision. Because I think from what I have read about the developers and, you know, I know some of them, they all have the best of intentions here. And they, I mean, I, I think they're all going to be great partners for the city, no matter who you choose. But I think to be able to sit down and, and put all those creative minds together and you arm yourselves with the, with the facts and the people that you need on your side of the table, you can really develop this and make it work. And I think it, that's all I urge. I don't have an opinion right now on where it should go because there's lots of different opinions there, but I prefer to talk about the process and, you know, I'm available in the future if you have follow-up questions. But I think that it's a, it's a significant issue to face before you make a final decision. Because that process is what gives the public confidence in your decision. And there's a transparency of that process that reinforces the trust from the citizens to you. And all of you here wouldn't run for election, wouldn't spend your time on these tough issues if you weren't committed to Jefferson City. So it's building a framework, I think, really to support, you're going to support staff. They're under, again, tremendous amount of pressure to make the right recommendations to you and come up with the right ideas. But I think they would benefit as well from the additional resources. I know the staff.
Joe, you're kind of over time, probably.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm done.
Not that I don't appreciate people asking, helping me, so I'm.
That's right. That's all. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pury, for joining us today.
Well, thank you, sir. It's a pleasure, always. Good morning to everyone here. I've already been warned that I should stay on topic in this meeting and should not stray from what I have to say, but I had no intention of straying from the topics in the first place, so just wanted to put the minds at ease. And if anybody has their hackles or back up to relax. I needed really to just speak onto the facts, and the facts have to do with what you guys must consider. As Mr. Bednar has aptly pointed out, you need to look at the finances and the overall impact that you will have. Something that's never been mentioned in this entire situation is the impact that it would have on your industries that are already here. This convention center was funded, or is being funded by a lodging tax that is being collected by the hotel community and the lodging community, a community that right now suffers at a very weak occupancy and a weak ADR. Something that is starting to show signs of recovery, but after almost two years of the initial passing of the lodging tax. The projects that have been proposed actually weaken your economy in the sense that they add more hotel rooms to this area than already exist. You're already dividing a further pot. As Mr. Wallace so aptly pointed out at the last meeting, is if we take a center that is of the wrong size, of the wrong caliber, and put it in place regardless of where you put it, it will only divide the pie further up and weaken the hotel industry as it currently stands. Make sure that when you make your decision, you take that factor into consideration. Another thing to take into consideration is where the extra nine, extra money will come for your subsidies after the nine million dollars is concerned. Currently, we are strapped to do things that we need to do for the city as far as our infrastructure is concerned, as far as our schools are concerned, as far as our police and fire are concerned. Those monies come out of our general revenue fund. If we provide a subsidy to any project, we will be taken away from education, we will be taken away from fire, and we'll be taken away from police protection. These are things that, as a city, we do not want to do. Mr. Bednar talks about attracting industries into our town. To do that, we need to provide them an educated population. We need to provide the individuals coming in the safety of police protection and the safety of the protection of their assets from the fire department. If those revenues are not available in the general revenue fund and are be providing to fund just one aspect of our economic cycle, then we will not get the involvement that we want and the investment that we need in our town. Things that need to take into consideration also is location, is the infrastructure that's in place to handle a volume should the, the conference center succeed. You need to make sure that you have the money set aside to do that. I have a friend that actually is in San Jose who sits on the administrative council for the city council. His first question as a finance director to everybody there is, I love the idea, it's fantastic, so tell me how are you going to maintain it? Show me what's coming down year two, year three, year four, after it opens up. If you cannot prove to me that we have the revenues to sustain that maintenance, to provide what is needed to be provided for that project, then I cannot endorse it. That's what he does for the city of San Jose in California, which we can all agree is a successful municipality. That is the same question that I wish for you to ask. Great, it's a great idea, but when we do this, do we have the revenue stream to contribute the sustainability that is going to be required? Do we have the two to five million dollars that is going to be needed in case a subsidy is to be requested and given? Do we have the extra six to ten million dollars to be given for a parking garage? I said earlier that if it's not the right size and if it's not the right fit, then we don't need to be doing it. These factors are what you will need to consider to determine if this is the right size or the right fit. As a person that's been in this business community, who's invested heavily into it and who has the most to gain from a conference center's completion, I guarantee you that the proposals that are here are not the best fit for our community. There is a specific size that you requested, there were a specific number of rooms that you wanted. You have not gotten those. Don't do something for the sake of just doing it because that's the only two that have been made. Sometimes the sweeter fruit is at the top of the tree, but to climb to the top of the tree, sometimes you have to fall off a couple of branches on the way there. Don't be afraid to fall to get the better fruit. I thank you for your time. I wish you the best luck in your consideration and hope you'll do right, what is, what is right for Jefferson City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pury. Our next speaker, Mr. Darryl Winiger.
Did I say your last name correctly? You did. Good job. That's a tricky one. Thank you to the council for taking the time to hear some public comment. My name is Darryl Winiger, resident one twenty-five Forest Hill Avenue here in Jefferson City. Just here to speak personally that I, first and foremost, support the concept of a conference center in Jefferson City. It seems like a lot of the commentary and a lot of the focus has been about location and dividing this and that. I have the utmost respect for the developers involved for the sites that are being proposed currently, but in general, wanted to make sure I pointed out that the conference center, I think, would definitely be an economic boom for our city and it would develop and help bring in some of the other businesses that we want to see in this area. My opinion is that the Capitol Mall is a better spot, a better spot for this conference center. I feel like it's the most economical, from what I can tell in the research I've done, it's the most economical place that the most potential for a low subsidy or no subsidy beyond the nine million dollars would be located. I don't think there's a choice between a bad location and a good location, for instance, here. There are a lot of benefits to both locations. There's good, but they're very different by nature. There's a tremendous amount of difference between both facilities. That, that being taken into consideration, the businesses Jefferson City hopes to attract and retain alongside the conference center and to be supported by some of the, the traffic generated by the convention center, they don't share our nostalgic views of our downtown. They don't share our history or our intent that we want to develop this area. What they do a lot of times is they look at the metropolitan statistical information available, they make the best information, the best decision they can with the information they have, which is complicated. There's a lot of dynamics and the conference center can change some of those dynamics. So when we discuss a lot of our emotion and when we discuss a lot of, of our intention and what we want, I don't think a lot of the businesses that would come along with this look at it quite from that perspective, so I wanted to at least point that out. We have to be aware of the numbers involved and the, the specifics that are looked at whenever any business is relocated or, or invested in a city. What they do look at too is success in other communities. And they've had a lot of exposure and a lot of time and experience developing in other cities, working with other municipalities, working with other private businesses. So I have a lot of faith in that private development community in general, just because of the exposures they have and the relationships they've developed over time. And once again, in my opinion, I like the, the ability that the Capitol Mall has to be responsive and the, the less dollars focused on infrastructure or expansion if and when this is built and successful. With all the good things that both sides offer, I still think that the, the subsidized part of this is important to me, or the lack of future subsidies is one of the things that drives my opinion. Whatever, I'd love to believe that this would be a model that wouldn't need subsidies. I'd like to believe that of the two that I've seen, the most likely one is the one I'm saying today, the west side of it, just because of what Mr. Pury alluded to, just that lack of operating costs, that lack of future subsidized income, it's, it's important. If we just want to talk a lot about what we want as a community, I just wanted to throw a couple of other things out there too, though, that I would really like to get an international airport with a tariff-free cargo zone. I'd love to see you guys bring in, relocate the St. Louis Cardinals to Jefferson City because it'd be fantastic and it would be something I think everybody in the community would want. But in reality, I, I believe that this decision needs to be based on the economic indicators, the economic factors involved and for growth and for reduced to no subsidized viability, my opinion is the Capitol Mall is the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winiger. Our next speaker, Mr. Jim Penfold.
I appreciate the opportunity to make these comments. My name is Jim Penfold. I reside at nineteen oh-one North Circle Drive in Jefferson City. Little bit of background, I was a member of the Jefferson City Council for four years, from April two thousand seven through April two thousand eleven. And while I was on council for the four years, I was a member of the Conference Center Committee that was then in existence. And then for a period of more than two years, I served as the chair of that Conference Center Committee. And my following remarks are based on my perspective from that time. Jefferson City is the state capitol and the seat of Missouri government. Statewide, when people think of and talk about Jefferson City, they are probably considering the activities of the legislature, the statewide elected officials, the Supreme Court, and the state agencies. The image, the icon of Jefferson City that the people around the state have in mind is probably the state Capitol dome, or the state Capitol building, the Capitol complex, or our downtown. This is a good image for this city. It is particularly good when you're focusing on tourism, business travel, and the related meetings, conferences, and exhibitions that come from that. And it's particularly good also when your purpose is to bring more people in business to Jefferson City. I believe we need to polish that image. We need to build on our strengths. We need to invest our new resources to bolster and strengthen our main drawing card. The Capitol complex and our downtown is the main drawing card. And that's why I recommend the downtown location, West McCarty and Broadway, for the proposed conference center. The location is most convenient and proximate to the main attraction and customer, that is state government as a whole. It is also the location that will bring more and more people into the historic city core who will patronize its shops, restaurants, bars, and other attractions, thus supporting the continued vitality of the downtown. And let's make no mistake, the continued vitality of the downtown is of utmost importance to the image and the health of this city. A conference center at the West McCarty and Broadway location would also support other initiatives such as redevelopment of St. Mary's Health Center, the creative reuse of the old shoes factory or furniture store, the intercity bus station, and the old power plant. The location for a conference center would also provide the longer range incentive for the development of a green space corridor along Wears Creek. And I believe that a conference center in the downtown location would be more attractive to event planners, thus generating more business than a conference center built in another With respect to the size or the amenities of a conference facility, I would recommend that a conference center be constructed significantly larger than the space currently available at the Capital Plaza Hotel. Constructing a smaller facility than the Capital Plaza or the same size does nothing to attract larger groups to this city and directly competes with existing hotels. It would seem to me that a new conference facility should be constructed in accordance with the size requirements in your RFP. And, but in thinking and looking at the information we had from several years ago, I would think a very minimum of twenty thousand. a very minimum of 20,000 square feet of ballroom space, about the same amount of exhibition space, and an additional 10,000 square feet of breakout space is something to be looking at, at a very minimum. That is larger than Capitol Plaza. With respect to parking, and Bob, you and I can fight about this in the middle of a street someplace. The downtown needs additional parking. It needs additional parking in several locations. Parking is needed on the west end, serving the Capitol complex and the state office buildings, helping to free up space that could be turned into commercial or open space attractions. Parking is needed to serve the 100 blocks and the 200 block of East High and further east on High Street. The city has to expand parking downtown. It might as well start with a significant project on the west side. And on a subsidy, it has been long known and frequently stated that a conference center itself is not a significant moneymaker. The purpose of the conference center is to bring additional business to the city that benefits the various hotels, restaurants, and other businesses. The bigger picture should be examined. Promising or rejecting a subsidy beforehand seems to me to be short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penfold. Mr. Dick Groner. Mr. Groner, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm Richard Groner. I live at 425 Cedar Creek Court. I've spent a lot of time on this for a long period of time, and I was prepared to testify today, but I'm not going to testify because I know you've got an initiative petition that may change the whole dynamics of the situation. So let the vote on that first, and I'll testify. Thank you.
Thank you. That actually was the conclusion of our list. I know some extra folks that came in afterwards, after I had posed that question. Is there anyone else that would like to, at this time, speak on behalf of those topics for the public meeting?
Councilman, I think there is actually, at the bottom of the list, Dave Wallace. We just put him on the bottom because he was a repeat customer, and we indicated that the first-time speakers would get priority.
Mr. Wallace, would you like to come up? Welcome back.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and visit with you once again about the conference center program. I, once again, want to reiterate, I speak for myself personally. I speak from my experience of being in the hospitality business 28 years. I was director of sales here at the Capitol Plaza for 16 years. I have seen groups come and go, I have seen groups outgrow us, I have seen groups that have turned away from Jeff City because we just don't have the size facility. So the first thing I want to do is piggyback on my last statements. We need to build the right-sized facility that will benefit our community and not, as Mr. Currie said, divide the pie any smaller, okay? It's got to be right-sized. Second thing I want to talk about today is the location. And, you know, I've seen our city over the past several years invest a pretty considerable sum of money in purchasing up land along McCarty Street and Washington Street for this potential development. I'm not sure what the plan is to do with that property if a mall location is decided on, but, you know, there's been a lot of time and effort, a lot of posturing with the state, to be able to secure the property that we need to build this facility in the downtown area. You know, when I was, before you before, I said that you need to take a look at the competition in the market. What do they have, what do we have, and what is a benefit that we've got that they don't? If you look at every facility that I mentioned, Columbia, Lake of the Ozarks, every one of those facilities required attendees to get in a car and drive somewhere if they want to go out, have dinner, go for entertainment, shopping for the most part. A downtown facility would eliminate that need of the guests to get in a car and drive somewhere. With all the money we've invested in the improvement in our downtown area, it has really turned into be quite a positive feature of our city. And for folks not to have to drive somewhere, to be able to experience not only entertainment, restaurants, but also our main attraction, Jeff City is the capital. You know, people do come here to get access to their legislators and to express their point of view. So my personal feeling is, the downtown location is the right one. Currently, they're almost, they're right at 500 guest rooms already in existence in the downtown area. When you look at the mall location, stretching all the way to Apache Flats, you've got about 314 rooms. The nearest overflow housing from the mall is over five miles, almost six miles away, down to the Capitol Plaza. From the downtown location, you're less than two miles out to the Truman Hotel and the other hotels along that row, extending out Jefferson Street and Christie. So just the proliferation and the location of the hotel rooms, the entertainment, the ease of access, I mean, you're right at the junction of Highway 50, 63, and 54. You know, people don't have to drive five miles out once they come down 54. They're right downtown. They're right where the convention center would be located. So, you know, that is my two cents worth, you know, look at the competition. What gives us a leg up on the competition? And just want to make sure that your all's decisions are for the right-sized facility. And if we don't have the right-sized facility on the table right now, let's wait. It's not going to kill us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. And since I don't have your name on the list, would you go ahead and state your full name and address, please?
My name is Tim Stallman. I live at 2204 Melody Drive. Yesterday, the Citizens Against Convention Center Committee, a new organization dedicated to stopping subsidies of a proposed convention center in Jefferson City, filed two notice of intent to circulate petition documents with the Jefferson City Clerk's Office. This is the beginning of an organized opposition to the convention center proposed by the city council. We believe that the citizens deserve a vote on the multimillion-dollar convention center issue. These notices and intent set in, the committee has proposed two ordinances. The first will eliminate the 4% lodging tax and stop the city from using any tax or public money for the construction of a convention center. The second proposed ordinance only states that the city cannot use tax or public money for construction of a convention center, but leaves in place the 4% lodging tax. The committee will decide later which of the two ordinances to proceed with after getting comments back from the city. The city has 10 days to approve or disapprove the proposed petitions. The taxpayers of Jefferson City have not been given a real voice in the decision to spend $10 to $20 million of tax money on these proposals. These proposed ordinances will set in motion a plan to provide for elections to decide what the public really wants. The 4% lodging tax passed several years ago did not state anything about a convention center. It only stated that the money be used for promotion of tourism, that's what it actually said. The taxpayers were sold a pig in a poke. We citizens deserve an honest and fair election on this expensive and foolish plan. We had an election that defeated this plan once. It was called Transformation, and it lost by almost 2 to 1. The city council needs to abide by that election. We citizens deserve a vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stallman. Anyone else? At this point, will we open it? There's no question and answer, anything like that, is it?
No, I suppose if any councilman wants to make a statement, they can, but it was just to allow the public to be heard, so.
And I'll go around any of the council members, have anything they want to mention? Okay, and that will conclude today's public meeting on the conference center proposals. Again, our next public meeting on this will be Monday, September 23rd, at 5:30 PM, before our council work session. Thank you for everyone coming out this afternoon.